I think it's been like 10, 15 miles. I gotta wait six minutes.
Yeah.
I can't, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's a good sign.
Yeah. Um, she's, uh, never heard of her. They probably.
And then I asked Jan and she's.
I can watch some.
Yeah. And that's the most sad.
Nobody else.
Yeah. Turn it in.
Yes. Yes. Uh, no, I, I don't really ignore this. So, um, we're going to talk about it, but. We surprised you for your birthday. So I'm just gonna stay with you because there's no point in driving to Sally's. Oh, yeah.
But it go.
It's, well, that happens.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, you know, we just, it's, I mean, contact. Hospital attention.
Oh, but they were some.
So definitely come around.
For me, it's.
The main.
The conflict, uh, the gender.
So maybe not.
Thank you.
It's her dog.
It's, it's, it's a lot.
It's ready.
It's not bad.
Those times.
She's working. No, I mean, it's not, it's not school. It's outside herself. You know, they got that.
I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, Dan.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
That is that, and this is here. Okay, indication. Uh, Todd, would you give us an indication, please?
Father God, we love you so very much. We think, give thanks for your love and your mercy. While we pray for wisdom as we go through this proceeding today. And, uh, we ask that you better this community, bring us together as one. All these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
See, I have a little, um, layer of evidence. I didn't know she was gonna go as well. Okay, we'll go to the citizen comments. Strong. Does this work? Do I have to hold it? Because, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. Okay. My name is Cheryl McClure. I am a resident of Ladonia area, but I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce of Ladonia. The current city council can minimize the efforts we have made with the 20-mile garage sale and Market on the Square, but the fact remains that it has brought energy to the community and revenue to the businesses in Ladonia. As long as I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce, we've done nothing but work for the benefit of the city. If the current city council had a problem with the market, we were not aware of it. In a previous meeting, you said, forget about the past, about our handshake agreement. And then the city attorney said, we got away with doing it as if we were cheating the city out of something. Have you noticed the metal picnic tables on the square? The nice metal trash cans on the square? How about the red yuccas in the pots around the square? The wrap on the marquee back here? Um, Christmas decorations? Those were all paid for and installed by your local Chamber of Commerce. Also, the Chamber of Commerce at Ladonia has funded additional dumpsters for citywide cleanup and contributed large sums of money for the Fourth of July fireworks. You see, these things benefit the city. There was a time when we worked well with the city, and that's what helps the community. In the future, please, let's focus on solutions that make community efforts successful without the backlash of short-sighted decisions. How about a goal to make Ladonia a more pleasant place to live, including promoting businesses that fit our community while inviting others to visit and enjoy our wonderful town and surrounding area? Thank you. Appreciate your time. Uh, Russell, the one.
Yeah, chamber needs to let people come in.
Senator Mayor Protan, I appreciate that you've minimized the comments from Nina Geller during citizen comments.
There will be no comments, please.
Just a couple of things, unscripted tonight because I'm a little wound up about the fact that this council keeps approving minutes and financial statements that they know contain inaccuracies. If you're gonna approve a financial statement, make sure that the information on that financial statement is correct. Negative bank balances on a financial statement do not send a very good message to our community, especially if you don't know what the balance is. Second, it came to my attention that a member of the community went up to City Hall and asked about maintaining the marquee, and they were told that they were not allowed to do that because of the risk associated with using stairs. I noticed recently that the stairs are currently in use somewhere else. So let's be consistent about the way we apply the rules because in Western culture, we are all created equally and we're to be treated equally by our government. And if that's not clear, we'll send a clear message. Thank you.
State tag.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to give you an update on the treehouse and activities over the last year or so. It's been another, another successful year. We've had guests that come to towns, spend money to town from 32 different states that fly in, go to the treehouse, spend time around the area, and fly back home. So we've really been excited about that. And they've spent their money, spent their time, and, and given donations, as we've done before. And Nancy and I have, have matched those. And in addition to that, we, we had a summer of service, that we called it, over the summer. We went around town and we maintained any properties that anybody volunteered for us to do. I know Debbie, you know, participated also, and a lot of people in the audience did too. So with those efforts, we maintained those yards through the summer, and we also maintained the trail. We did 15 miles of the trail from Con Gap to Wolf City. So we've done a lot, a lot of work and a lot of participation from the group and the community, and that's really gone well. So with those efforts, we actually collected, you know, donations and for the time that people helped us. And we were also contributing hours and dollars for that. So tonight, we have $3,500 to give to the fire department in memory of my, my brother-in-law who passed away and my duty as a fireman. So, Greg, you want to get all the comments?
Thank you very much.
Bill, Debbie?
Well, good evening and season's greetings to everybody. Merry Christmas. I'd like to talk a little bit about the trash pickup increase. I would hope that the city council, if they haven't already, would go out and try and get some competitive bids before they let this thing go. There's gotta be more than one person out there. And if nothing else, the fear of losing the contract, I would think the current people might be willing to negotiate a better rate. And also, I would like to see anybody on the city council who's not paying for their trash pickup to reclusive themselves from all activities regarding this. Next, I'd like to talk about the weaponization of potential liability, which a previous speaker spoke to a little bit before me. It's just, again, the inconsistencies. I can remember we, uh, canceled an entire volunteer fire department because of potential liability. And yet, I, I know of, and I don't know how much of an effort was made to try and have a workaround on that because I've, I've got friends that live in Caddo Mills and they've had a volunteer police department there for years and years and years. It just went to a paid staff. So I'd like to know if they were able to do it, why we weren't. And then, oh, also, I believe today was the day that you were supposed to post for the election for, for May, and I didn't see anything up there. So somebody could please just check on that. And then also, I would like to talk a little bit about the preferential treatments of speakers because I can remember Dan, oh, quite a while back almost got kicked out of here because he turned around to address the crowd. Yet there, yet a couple of meetings ago, a fellow who came in here and was allowed to turn around and speak to the crowd during the citizens' comments, and that's not right. So I would like to be afforded the same privilege right now for my last comment. Can I, is that okay?
I don't run the media.
Okay, is that all right? Can I turn around and address the crowd for my last comment? Okay. We, as a community, had a wonderful, wonderful Christmas parade this year, thanks to all the participants. What, and if there's, if there's nothing else that we can gather around, rally around as a community, maybe it's the, uh, the birth of Christ. Maybe, next year, maybe we could have everybody decorate the front of their house, participate in the parade, we could make it a nice festival. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Jason Leaden.
Good evening, city council. I just wanted to give you an update about the website. Mayor asked me to, maybe, I think we had a special meeting in between, but, anyway, to look at the website and see what we could do. I just wanted to let you know that I'm still working on that, and there is some documents that I need from the city. I've emailed that to the city general email address. So I need to get those from you so that I can kind of progress and come forward. It's a kind of a process to prove that you want it, that you have responsibility for it, and those kinds of things. So I'm working on that, so just wanted to give you an update on that so that we can try and get that back in the city's hands. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse her. My name is Charles Walton. I have sat through some of your meetings. I offered this once before. I'm a double A operator. I'm also an instructor for TCEQ. I have some information here where you can apply for help from Texas Water Development Board to get your city water and wastewater where it needs to be. I have offered help before for, from some of your previous people, and in order to help, I live right out here on 2156. I don't live in your city, but I go to church here and I know people here. I have offered to help and was told my help was not needed. You need a lot of help. You fail continuously. You go on boil water notices because you cannot keep a chlorine residual, and the simple solution to that is to cool your water down. I ran your system for about six months when Gerald Isom was here, and TCEQ had us check your water from the fire item from dead stop, and it was 120 degrees until climbing after five minutes. If you would cool your water in a water tower, you have two places where you can get money to help you. Texas Water Development Board and Farmers Home Administration. Both issue and give loans, low-cost, low-interest loans, to small towns in order to help them get into compliance. You don't even have a licensed operator, water or wastewater, full-time in your city. I don't know whose certificate you're operating under, but their people are supposed to give you at least 20 hours a week in order for them to be able to say that they are doing your system. And if you have anyone else signing your paperwork without a license, you're subject to a $25,000 per day per violation from TCEQ. I don't know, how many connections do y'all have? Does anybody know on your water? No one knows? And I, I heard, I don't know whether it's true or not, that you have, you are estimating your water bills right now. You're making a serious mistake. I had that happen to me once, and I took over a city that had a man that had been estimating their water for nearly seven months, and they had people come in there with water bills up into the $2,000 range because he'd been pistol-whipping the paperwork. You cannot do that. Your water system is a cash register to your city. Most of your, your tax base and your water and wastewater bills.
Okay, your thumbs are at your 20 minutes as a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you though.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes from November 20th, 2023, let go meeting. Anybody have any questions or?
No, ma'am.
Could y'all, like, to group all these together or, um, y'all one by one?
I'd rather group them.
So, uh, November 20th, November 27th, October 19th, and October 30th, 2023.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the minutes for November 20, 2023, November 27th, 2023, October 19th, 2023, and a special meeting of October 30th, 2023.
Dan, is my motion to accept the, uh, minutes from November 20th, 27th, 2023, October 19th, and 30th of 2023, and Greg, you're taking in the motion, all in favor? Okay, accounts payable for December 2023. Anybody have any questions?
Fair enough. Is this the last one? It's two hundred and fifty.
31st is his last, I don't know, but. Probably gonna be another one.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the council.
I have that question, but there's two amounts that are the same. So Michael Grandstaff.
Contract and one is?
Yeah, one is contract, one is, um, one or two, and another one says, so Virginia fee.
Scratch the word, um, the water student, the fee, it's gonna be the contract fee.
Just one. So it means we are down?
Yes.
So, oh, and four is the eight or nine?
Seven.
We're, we're owing $4,583 instead of $9,000 and some more dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So does that $4,000 need to be taken off the bottom double?
So the one that comes off is super.
The contract fee space. Okay. Yes, thank you. I meant to start about that too. I missed it, so sorry about that motion. Uh, I'll make another motion to accept the accounts payable for December 31st, 2023, by, and I'll deduct into the $4,583, 34, Michael Grandstaff.
Okay, I have a motion. Is anyone gonna second the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Greg, is the sake of the motion to, um, approve accounts payable, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, financial report for November 2023. Then, anybody have any questions or comments or?
I'm thinking we need to not approve, but, um, um, can we have an audit? I mean, I don't know if we got that on the agenda, but, um, on these, make sure all these figures are correct.
There's no any motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jan, is my motion to not approve the November 2023 financial report until we have our yearly audit? May I all second that? I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Two?
No.
So it's tied two to two, and pass out here the regular. Okay, moving down to information reports, utility public works department.
Several wonderingly still. Still don't have anybody to accept the water or sewer license person.
Okay, volunteer fire department?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, for November 2023, Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department report. Total calls, there were 10 medical emergencies, four, had one structure fire, one grass fire. We had no auto fires. We had one smoke investigation, one motor vehicle accident, one lift assessed, sorry, no gas leaks, and they had one structured fire rekindled, they had ten two, and mutual aid zero. For the month of November, they held one business meeting and one training facility maintenance night. That's for Grady Howard, Chief Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, motion. Do you know anything? Okay, please, Robert.
No show anything. He's killing, laughing all the chick.
Hey. Men.
Having exposure.
Oh, can buy.
In the blue, white and blue.
In the blue, white and blue. So, okay. So do we know if they got the office checked out for them to start working?
As far as I know, they have none.
They need to get on that. Or we need to do something else.
We're still waiting on paperwork, I'm sorry. So, it's everything fine on, um, that yet, we don't know.
Maybe you know?
As far as I know. Yeah, as far as I know, they're still waiting on them to do the walkthrough. Never, walkthrough.
Okay, all business events and activities at City Hall.
We want to go with a close session for all this.
Although, because I don't. Oh, you know, that.
Well, we're waiting on him to get back with us on the information, and we'd also gotta do the hiring city employee. And then, uh, C and D.
Okay, so at this time, we will adjourn to close session at seven thirty.
On which items?
Uh, A, B, I guess all those. If that's what they.
Yeah, A, A, B, C, and D.
They're reporting. What those are. Seven, seven baby. Okay, we'll reconvene at eight thirty-nine P M. Okay, we're gonna go up here to A, events and activities at City Hall.
We want to, um, make a motion that we, uh, have our city attorney to permit base ordinance for advanced activities.
Permit base use fee?
Ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance for a permit base use fee, is that one? Okay.
Okay. Jan's made a motion to have the city attorney, um, draw up a permit base fee ordinance, uh, usage fee, usage fee base ordinance.
I'll second.
Did anybody say that that motion, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
No, aye.
Okay, uh, hiring of the city employee.
I make a motion to, uh, hire Paul Levy, um, with sixteen dollars and, uh, an hour. With a ninety day, um, probationary period, and to start on December the nineteenth.
Okay, Greg is my motion to, uh, hire Paul Levy as the city, um, employee utilities employee, starting twelve nineteen twenty-three. Did anybody want to second that motion? I'm sorry. Did anybody second that motion, all in favor?
Uh.
No.
Uh, three to one. Okay, um, C, consult attorney, deforming, um, involving the former city secretary. So we are gonna take no action at this time? Okay, D, ordinance for water sewer fees.
Make a motion that we have the attorney rewrite the water rate fees, um, make a rewrite the proposition for water rate fees.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Greg is my motion, um, for the attorney to, um, what'd you say?
Rewrite.
Rewrite the proposition for the water sewer fees, water sewer fees. Uh, Jan has said that the motion, all in favor?
No. Aye.
Uh.
Uh. Okay. We, uh, do business, make account, and check signing amendments.
Um, you wanna read that? Diane, she's the one that got the information from, um, the bank.
Okay, um, well, she put her, uh, his pad and.
Yeah. It's just letting us know that, uh, so.
Actually, there's three signatures on the bank card, and it's, uh, the mayor, mayor pro temp, and the city secretary. The mayor and the mayor pro temp were supposed to sign all the checks unless the, either one of those are absent, then the city secretary may do so. Um, we're also getting a, um, debit card, just in case we have to do something online. We, um, and I am proposing that that is, um, set at no cash to be withdrawn from the ATM at any time. My recommendation.
Okay, now, the only, the only issue we have is they're telling us that as long as they are a signer on the account, it's not gonna matter whether you're available or not.
I'm requesting that it would be the mayor and the mayor pro temp.
I understand.
If we're not available, then she can sign, so the mayor and mayor pro temp know what's going on.
I understand, I'm just letting you know that the bank will cash those checks.
They will, but if we make it stated that it's the mayor and mayor pro temp that are supposed to sign the check unless we're out of, um,
Not available.
Not available, then she can sign the checks.
I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just telling you the bank regulation.
Well, our ordinance is gonna say.
It's not gonna supersede the bank, though.
How you enforce that is through policy, if she's signing checks when she's not supposed to be, she could get fired. Yeah. Come on. The bank's gonna cash the check.
It's not a real hard thing to do.
I'm just saying.
Maybe we just follow the rules.
Just telling you, we can't let that stipulation through the bank. You need to call them and explain, well, okay, I did too, but she told me otherwise.
I made a motion for the mayor and mayor pro temp to be the, uh, additional, the first signers on the checks, and if we're not available, then the city secretary can sign, and as far as the, uh, card goes, to make it where you cannot, uh, have access to cash, just only, uh, use as a debit card.
I'll second that motion.
And there's a seven hundred fifty dollar.
Now, the card has set at seven hundred fifty dollar limit for the date.
Second thing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
Okay, Republic Companies Trash Pickup Increase. Is this January the first when the contract runs out, maybe with that? Is this the only one? That's the only thing I have.
I don't.
I'm the one that.
Okay, well, we've got a contract somewhere.
January first is when you're going to pay.
According to the letter, it says whatever four point three the section is of their agreement, that they have the right to do, looks like a annual cost adjustment, so that'd be the first place to look, is if they actually have that right to do cost adjustments every year. That's the place to look. And I'll have a copy of it, I've just got the letter.
Okay, it doesn't say how much the increase is or anything, other than a percentage.
Does it mention the consumer price index or inflation or cost of living raise or anything on that, or cost of living adjusted?
Consumer price.
And that's what the letter says, that they're gonna, they, they, they calculated five point three four percent is the consumer price index went up that much, so. Their, their, the cost is apparently related to that, that indexing.
Exactly. And we need, I think, we need.
I came near you.
And find out if.
I came near you. My.
I don't even think it works.
Sorry.
She just needs a breakdown of what it's gonna cost, either two dollars or ten dollars more amount.
Unless, I don't think it would hurt to call, we've had these, yeah, another sanitation company, because we've had these for a while, and they may be, uh, taking us for granted that we're gonna stay with them.
So we want to try and get three quotes?
Is there three around them?
I don't know.
I know there's two, there'd be two.
Education, solution, condition, I don't know, they got some kind of agreements, I don't know how that all works. So we may only have the one other option.
You might want to call Honey Grove tomorrow and see who they're using and who the last two bids are, so we'll have some more vendor names, we're gonna send out some bids.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion then, or is that your motion or?
Motion to seek, uh, quotes, uh, for sanitation pickup. I would say, get as many as we can, if I had more than anything, might be.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Jan is my motion, I mean, Greg is my motion to get additional quotes for sanitation pickup, and Jan has seconded the motion, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Uh. Okay, uh, resolution for home investment partnership program reconstruction assistance.
So, this is basically just a continuation from Grant Works.
Is this it?
Yeah. From Grant Works to continue, uh, with the, uh, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, uh, program. And, uh, he came by and talked to us a little bit, trying to get Pat into the system, and that didn't work, so he's gonna have to come back and do that again. But nevertheless, I, I think our contract, uh, is up for renewal, and basically, it's the exact same as before. This resolution number that's at the top, that's just a generic number he put in there, he will have to get that information from another site, he said.
So are they gonna be doing additional houses, the, um, what?
Well, this is so he can.
Okay.
This just, if we don't have this, we don't have opportunity to do it.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the, the, um, contract from Grant Works to continue the T D H C A housing grants.
Okay. There's a second?
I'll second that motion.
Greg is my, uh, Greg is my motion to accept the resolution for home investment partnership program, and Jan has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
Okay, yearly, uh, scheduled yearly audit.
I make a motion that.
Well, other than that, we just need to get one done.
We need to get it done, that's, that's what I, my motion was gonna be.
ASAP.
Yeah. In fact, he called, he's called twice now, so we need to acknowledge.
Who's made a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, schedule the yearly audit.
And who's second? I'll say.
Mike Ward.
I'll second. Okay, Greg is my motion to schedule the yearly audit with Mike Ward, everybody has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay, we are going to go back into closed session. Eight fifty-five?
For what agenda item?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, A, consult with city attorney regarding opportunity, uh, options for the city.
Look, they all said the same way you did. Must've been a tough crowd.
Okay, we are gonna reconvene at nine thirty-seven. And take up new business, um, A, consult with city attorney regarding opportunity options for the city. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to have, uh, the city, uh, have opportunity evaluate the system of our water and sewer system, and after the evaluation, uh, we're gonna have them follow up by submitting that proposal should be done ASAP.
I'll second that motion.
Jan has seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
Aye.
And I. Okay, any motion?
I have a question. Um, Ms. Gale, so it would be Ms. Gale, if I, if I needed to designate which account you wanted the debit card on.
Mm-hmm.
So I can help with that.
Gonna be on the general.
Gonna be on the general, that's all. Okay, motion adjourned. Make the motion adjourned at nine forty-eight. Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, we will adjourn at nine forty-eight with the motion made by Debbie and seconded by Jan. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.